We have several things we need to take care of before we start the press release. As always, we're honored to have John Moe for us today, and John is going to make the way up to the podium, and he's going to explain this big luminous handout we have. How you doing, John?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Thanks for having me present the audit report, and appreciate you guys letting us do this work. Again, we're taking pride in getting to do our hometown audit. It was a good audit, really, probably the best, one of the best audits I've had since we've been doing this work, honestly. We probably have fewer comments than we've ever had, or German reasons we've ever had. It was a very clean audit. The county department did a really good job. I wanted to thank Cindy and her staff, John, who is here. But it was, compared to the past two, three years, really, really smooth, and not as many adjustments, not as many comments. One thing I want to do, let's just kind of put through the report real fast. We'll start on page seven. I want to point out, this is management's discussion and analysis, and Cindy Boyd really, really did a good job with this. This is a part of the report that she writes, and she really took ownership and made some changes to the format, and hit some nice scraps in there. The purpose of this is anybody should be able to read this and have an understanding of the financial health of the city, and particularly how it compared to last year. But I wanted to point out, that section, and I wanted to look over at the government-wise financial statements. On page 21, 22, total assets for the city, citywide, $201 million. Total liabilities were $200 million. That leaves a net position of $201 million of what the city is very healthy right now. On page 23, this is, I say this every year, but it's a very strange-looking income statement. And if you notice, the expenses are on the left, which is really, really strange, and the revenues are on the right. The purpose and the theory behind the format is that number, that negative $41 million number you see there, the reason the county set it up this way was to say, how much in tax dollars does the city need to make to cover its costs? That's the number, $41 million. And the taxes collected were in excess of that number. So, and you guys please stop if you have any questions. The bigger part, I know you all studied closely, you probably already know it, so... But page 24 is the government, is just your government funds. You've got the general fund, and the other major funds there, and all the other funds. This is kind of what you're used to looking at on a month-to-month basis. And the general fund had a fund balance of right at $63 million, which again is a very healthy number. Any questions there? The general fund had $1.6 million in excess of its expenses during the year, not before transfers in and out of other funds, but it's basically collecting about $1.6 million over the rest of the expenses, which hit a whole lot considering there's $60 million in expenses in the year, but that's sort of how the general fund resulted. The, if you want to look at page 32, that is the privateering funds, our electric utilities, sewer, and then of course telecom, everybody will remember back in October, that was sold, and it's reflected in these statements. One thing I will point out is that every one of these business-type activities covered its cost, it all had, each one of them had a little bit of profit, which is what you want, you don't want any of them subsidizing from other ones, and we didn't have that issue at all. Other than that, I'll call your attention to note eight, debt footnote on page 50. I think it's important, you know, for you guys to understand the debt within the city. It's listed there, so I just hope that you guys will be aware where that is. After that, on page 68, you've got the budget versus actual, and you guys already know this, but they collected more revenue than the budgeted, and you spent less than the budgeted spend. So both of those are good indications, which operate within the budget, and budgeting in a conservative manner. After that, page 101, we've got more debt schedules, if you want to get more of the weeds on the debt, we've got the debt schedules back there. And the other thing I think is interesting, and look very, very back, we've got various statistics for the past 10 years. Page 111 is sort of really began, and if we can just look at page 111, look at the taxes over the past 10 years, and where we were 10 years ago. Page 111, to where we are now. It's a pretty significant growth in that period of 10 years. Does anybody have questions on the financials? I've got, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about our comments, but any questions on the audit report? It was a good audit, it really was. You should have also received our letter. We've got four comments there, and the first comment is that they're, this comment has been in this report every year for a long time. There are capital assets that are not in service, that we've still got on the books, that we've not been able to identify. From what I understand, with GIS software, we're going to be able to find the identification this year, and I'm hoping that we won't have that statement next year, but that's a comment that's been in there for 20 years.
John, I got to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You say they're in the report, but they're unable to identify. Why can we not identify that set if you guys listed on the report?
Um, I may have said that the wrong way. What happened is, you put a piece of equipment in service, you know, electric utility. Well, you came along at some point and you removed it, you put it in storage, and you didn't take it off the books. But then you went and you put it back in service. So in some cases, it could be on there twice. After a certain period of time, most of all that's going to depreciate and out, and it won't be a big deal, but that's sort of what happened, and most of it is from long, long, long ago, when cities weren't really required to keep up with capital assets. But from what I understand with GIS and that software, we're going to be able to track the big stuff really, really well, and we'll be able to reconcile what we have in service out in the city with what we have.
And then we'll be able to either wipe out, or whatever, or if I had to, and clear this up.
Exactly.
Well, are we currently using some type of a numbering system, like each large piece of equipment?
Um...
Like an inventory, so we've got an inventory that can be identified by parcel?
Yes. Derek, Joey, you want to comment on that?
Oh, well, it all has to do with electric, and it's like you said, where they put it in, it's not bad. They upgrade, it needs to be bigger, something happens, they redesign, they move it over. And so all this that we've been talking about with NIS, and trying to get to an accounting software that's cost-based instead of governmental accounting, which is when y'all, when the city council approved the additional roof to set this in place, and now we have page, and so we are in the process of working with Jackson Ford to set this system up. It's a different accounting, but what it allows is when the crews go out, it can track how many man-hours was on the job, and all the supplies you use, and where the assets were put, and so it will track automatically, and you don't have to depend on somebody sticking something out in the yard and nobody knowing what it is. So it's a systems era, it's not as simple as going out and counting it, counting it. If it was, we'd have counted it years ago, but we know what we have, but we got to get it in the right system so that it'll work. And so changing to a cost-based system, and that's a lot of work, I mean, that's just a lot of work. And that's what page we've been working on with Cindy, and Derek, and are working on this. So this is the last year we expect this comment.
We haven't discussed it a long time.
We have. The next comment, gearing salaries and benefits accrual, we had this issue last year, and then again this year, we just, we didn't remove the accrual from last year, so we basically had the accrual in there twice, and we had to make big adjustments. It was just a bookkeeping thing, and the county department's aware of it, and they're going to fix it next year. The next two items are both related to IT, to software and cyber. The first comment is basically just recommending that you guys have some written policies about when the city goes out and purchases new software, that IT is involved in some capacity from the beginning to the end, because what you don't want to do is spend a bunch of money on software. You get that software and learn that it doesn't really work the way you want it, or learn that it doesn't work with some other software somewhere else within the city. So as you're introducing new software to the IT environment, you want to make sure those guys are very involved. So that's just a recommendation there.
Question. So we have someone else that ordered, designed the IT department?
What happened in this case is we bought some software for Parks and Rec that did not perform as we were told. IT was aware that we bought it. No one goes out on their own and just orders software and installs it, okay? That's not, you can't do that. But we need a, we don't have any written policy that addresses this situation. We've been trying to do, have some legal action against this company because it will not do what they told us it would do, okay? It's not that we bought the wrong software, it will not do what it's supposed to do, and Guy has been involved in the legal action on this, and probably going to have to buy another software. It just will not, it will not do the things we want it to do. And they say, yes, it will, but no, it won't. So that's, that's what happened on this one. But no one, and I approve all the requisitions that are signed in the city, nobody buys software unless I approve something I don't want to do, without them knowing that it's being purchased. Now, we probably need to do a better job of making sure that it's doing all the things they want it to do, but we'll fix that with written policy. It's not law.
The follow-up comment is related to cybersecurity, and in my opinion, this is, if it's not the biggest threat to the city, it's one of the biggest threats, cybersecurity. You guys can, if you read the paper, and you see different cities all over the country are dealing with this and getting hacked. En Seco was one, Encinas one, and small cities as well have trouble with this. And you guys have a great IT staff. They are aware of this, they're on top of it, they do a very good job. My recommendations are that you have a third party come in and sort of review what our IT group's doing, just to have another set of eyes look at what they're doing, because things in that world change so fast. It's good to have an independent group coming and look at it, and want to understand, talking to Stephen, that proposal's already been submitted. So it's something that the city is already, is underway, and you guys are going to do. One of the other comments in here was that every single employee within the city needs to be trained in identifying these emails that you get that you shouldn't click on. And this past year, the IT department started doing that on a quarterly basis. Every single employee within the city is trained and have to pass. If you fail, you lose your credentials at some point, you have to take the training. When new employees are hired, I understand that they have to go through training as well, but that's something new this year that has just started, but it's something that I think will improve our security there. Mainly, I wanted you guys to know, that's a huge risk, and we'll support IT group when they come and ask for these. Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
Hard to argue with, too much of those results, and so commend their staff for the report, and thank you, John, for what y'all did together to make it easy to understand.
Thank you.
I see we have a couple of resolutions to discuss. The first one, engineer.
Yes, thank you. Good evenings. Y'all doing okay? First resolution I'd like to present for acceptance of the main agenda will be a residential services for TTL Incorporated, for Industrial Boulevard and North Park Drive improvements. TTL is a renowned company throughout the state for geotechnical payment testing. We're represented this morning by Mr., uh, this afternoon by Mr. Rex Bush, who's displaying his personal distance in the back, leading Mr. Bush to be glad to answer any direct questions about the company, but I would say that TTL is very, again, well-known for their professional services. We actually, this past fall, hired TTL to do two technical investigations and payment recommendations for these two roads. Basically, you all know that Industrial Boulevard runs along West Fraser lumber mill and North Park Drive, and the section we're talking about is between Joanne and Andrew's Road. Both are distressed by age and traffic, and they need to be rehabilitated, say here, once and for all. We've been dealing with these for quite a while, and we believe that this agreement with TTL to provide survey, civil design, bid observation, construction engineering, and construction testing, along with their geotechnical testing in the beginning, this will be the complete package to ensure that these roads are completed and designed to build properly. So we recommend this proposal to be added to the council agenda, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you all may have this evening.
Scott, I have a question on the North Park presentation. The item 16 refers to concrete pavement, is not referred to on the other one?
On the other one.
On the Industrial Boulevard.
I believe concrete pavement is an option on both of them. We're certainly going to consider concrete pavement in sections, whether they be intersections or strips of pavement, but they are certainly considered, they will be considered on both of them.
If we've discussed this in the past, have we decided that in the future, we knew that we now need to put concrete in that?
Right, right, and certainly is going to be a strong recommendation. As they complete their design, cost estimates, constructability, all these things have to go into this procedure as we, as we go forward. But certainly, concrete pavement, new types of pavement development, increased thicknesses, changes in geometrics of the road, all these things, water is a major issue at North Park Drive, surface water, so they're going to be tackled a lot with this proposal, and we'll certainly be glad to have them in the meeting this evening. Any other questions?
Please, the council make that resolution number five, four.
Resolution number six. It should be number six.
In what? You're right. Thank you. I had to write that on my other piece of paper. Okay, we have another one to look at about the Stone Mart building. Mr. Scott?
This is a matter that really dates back to 1969. In 1969, Baker Dean and his wife Carolyn gave the city an easement to construct a sanitary sewer transmission line across Dean's property. And as consideration for that easement, the city agreed that the Deans and the heirs and the signs could connect to the transmission, the sanitary sewer line, at no cost to the Deans. The problem was that, you know, we had a sanitary sewer tap fee back in 1969, where we didn't have what we call now the sanitary sewer developmental assessment fee, which is a fee that's used to capitalize future development and demands that are put on the system by a new development such as Trillium Subdivision, Mr. Dean or deceased, and their property was sold to Stone Martin, a development company. Stone Martin subdivided the property, went to the Oklahoma Land Commission, and divided it into lots. I think there are 99 residential lots in Trillium Subdivision. The dispute has arisen as to whether Stone Martin should pay the sanitary sewer developmental assessment fee, which is $1,350 for residential lot. And Stone Martin says, well, the easement is plain and unambiguous, and says, we don't have to pay any cost as an heir and a sign of the Deans. The city says, well, that's not something that was contemplated at the time of the granting of the easement. You have before you a resolution that would settle this dispute by reducing the developmental assessment fee from $1,350 to $900 per residential lot. And it's a recommendation of the city administration that we agree to this settlement and approve of the settlement agreement.
There's one other thing there, the Stone Mart people have been doing, have been paying both fees...
Yeah.
...in Arrow, and so they have in fact overpaid. And so if we approve this tonight, there will be a credit that they will absorb over time by building additional houses at $900 a house. The credit will be reduced until it's used up, and then they'll start actually paying again.
Is that, the 87th?
So, the sanitary sewers developmental assessment fee is paid when the builder or developer obtains a building permit, it's all paid upfront, it's not when the tap is made, it's when the building permit is obtained. So there have been building permits already issued for this subdivision, so there will be a refund in the form of credit for those lots that have already, the building permits have already been obtained, and the developmental assessment fees have been paid. So that's actually in the prenuptials.
Question. Would the council make that resolution number seven? Under the four disse, I think we still have this one ordinance that we will leave on the table, hopefully it will be resolved, and we'll be able to take some action by the next week. We do have an annul that Russell is passing out right now, I hope we got a chance to read it earlier. It's an ordinance that will allow the mayor and the administration to take actions that may be needed at the federal health agency for the coronavirus. Anybody have any questions on the content of this ordinance?
Thank you for section eight. Eight?
Did you say eight?
Section eight, eight, page three.
All right.
The part that it says about a council member reasonably determines if his or her attempts to be at council meetings, the part that I have concern with is the part about such council member listening by telephone of electronic means may not be able to vote, participate, or vote in legislative matters. And I'm trying to understand that, because now we have virtual meetings, and you have an opportunity where everybody sees everybody, and everybody has that opportunity to vote. I'm at risk, and so there could be an opportunity where I would not be able to be here because of my health reasons. And I would not want to not be able to voice, vote because of what is stated here. So I'm trying to understand, why couldn't we not have that in this ordinance where our meetings are virtual meetings?
The law in Alabama is that a council member must be present at the meeting to be counted as a quorum and to vote on matters. So you have to be physically present and in attendance to be able to vote.
Now, I'm not, I'm not trying to have this other than for what has happened now.
The short answer is, is nobody ever saw, foresaw what's happening right now happening, and the law has not kept up with the connectivity. I mean, I think that's something that somebody higher than us is going to have to address and make it legal, but you're certainly right, that it's much more easier to do than it ever, ever has been.
Okay, so we're, you said it's against the law?
Yeah, yeah, it's against the law.
It's against the law to vote if you're not physically present at the meeting right now. The Alabama League of Municipalities recognizes that this is a problem under these kind of circumstances. The governor has emergency powers, and the league has asked the governor to weigh in and using her emergency powers to lessen the requirements of the open meetings law during this crisis. So far, the governor has not done so. I don't know that she's intentionally not done so, but I'm sure that the governor has been swamped with duties and responsibilities arising out of this crisis. So the short of it is that the ordinance states what the law is right now, and right now, we don't have the authority to allow a council member to interact outside the presence of the council. I wish, I wish we could.
Okay, and the other here says by telephone, other electronic means. So what is that other electronic means? What is that?
But it could be live streaming would be one electronic means, video conferencing. I mean, there are a number of virtual reality in our...
I guess what would be the point of that if you can't vote, even do it any of that? By telephone, by timing it, or whatever, you can't vote?
Well, at least you could keep up with what's going on.
Can I ask this? What if, what if the governor were to change that?
What's that?
What if the governor were to change that? Would this automatically change ours, or would we have to...
We'd have to amend it.
Could you, could we just amend it?
Sure, to amend that part.
With that, just to say if the governor were to change that, then we would be able to do that.
Either the governor has to, has to change the law under her emergency powers, which would only be effective for this one crisis right?
Yes, and so would the master.
Or the legislature could always change the law. But it looks like the legislature may just adjourn, or may postpone the session until late, you know, right now. So we don't know what's going to happen.
I think those are question guys that we have at a senate here that said, if the governor takes action to do that, then we would allow it.
Well, it all, if the governor, yep, we could, tell me what you wanted to say, and I'll be glad to put it in there.
I have another question while we're talking about that. So you're saying that this verbatim came from the state on, because I read this in a way that appears that we are giving the authority to our mayor to be able to do certain things, and I agree with them wholeheartedly. I don't have any other... And, and I agree with them wholeheartedly. I don't have any objection to that because we are in a crisis and I feel that we need to immediately have, and the mayor should have that authority to do that, which he does, but.
This ordinance did not come from the state of Alabama.
Okay, so if it didn't come from the state of Alabama, was there any type of, uh? It appears to me that if it did not come directly from the state of Alabama, verbatim, and we are given that, the, the authority to our mayor to be able to do these items, it appears to me that we should be able to do that, uh, and, and parliamentally, could we not put that kind of thing into this?
Well, we cannot, the council cannot override state law. I mean, we just can't do that. I wish we could, but we're stepchildren of the state and we have to abide by state law, so.
Right, and we've gone after making, uh, uh, an effort to contact the, you know, contact the governor.
Well, the league has been reaching out to the governor and tried to lessen the requirements of the open meetings law, but like I say, I, I don't know that the governor is ignoring anybody. I think the governor is just really busy with all.
Well, I really need to understand, too, let me clear this, go ahead, please. I am being penalized because of my health. And I think I should have as a responsibility to do my job in this crisis. And there's a way that I can do my job in this crisis based on technology. I just had a virtual meeting with an organization that has three hundred thousand members, and they were allowed to do it. And I, I, and here we are, only five members in a may up here, and, and I know that's state law and I understand, I respect that, but I think at some point, we need to bring to that, bring to the attention of how this, all of us could be affected. And then what happens? You know, this just, to me, this is asinine. You're, you, you have, you have a, a condition here that you're making exceptions because of this condition.
What, what time I, time I pass it? Uh, Mr. Gunnar has agreed to add a sentence to the ordinance that would allow us to use other forms of, uh, voting if, in fact, the governor, uh, declares it legal. I think you have something right, Dodger.
I did. Um, I would suggest that we just add this at the end, something to this effect. If the state law were to be permanently, temporarily or permanently changed to allow a person to vote by electronic means, then that would be allowed under this ordinance. I don't know if that's.
And this only, just for this condition. I'm not asking that for anything, just for this condition.
Disorderance, that's.
Say that again.
If the state law were to be permanently, or if the state law were to be temporarily or permanently changed to allow a person to vote by electronic means, then that would be allowed under this ordinance. Does that sound?
How do you keep the integrity of that vote?
Uh, wait, wait.
How do you, well.
If somebody's on the phone.
We aren't talking about phone, that's the difference.
Well, if somebody's, if I'm on this side of the camera, you know what I mean?
Well, what we're, what we're trying to do. We're trying to do, not necessarily fertilize someone that's on that side of the, the camera as much as we are trying to be able to do business if we can't all be in a room at the same time because of some pandemic.
Right, I'm just going by the league, he has power.
And then that, but that would be, your argument would be, need to be against the state. This is, this is if the state law were changed. So, I think, I think we're following state law right now and that if, if she chan, if she chan, or if the, if this legislature or the, or the governor changes the law, then we're following that law. That's all I'm saying. I think that's.
I'm understanding you, Dodger, which is great, but what I'm saying with the virtual conferencing that I was on, everybody was seeing. I mean, you have.
Thanks, Dodger.
In two thousand and ten, shortly after I came on the council, I was going to be gone for three weeks. I inquired about the possibility of being able to sit in on a telephone conversation and so forth due to since council meeting. It's state law that it can't be done. It can't be done until it's changed. So, there's nothing that we can do.
Okay, so where's your point? Because I understand that.
My point is that we need to continue to ask the league municipalities to try to get the governor to change this and possibly submit a letter from the mayor and the city attorney, seeing that I've seen council, we'd like that to be changed.
That's fine, but I also like the idea for Dodger is staying pretty in there. So, if it does become a reality, we would have to come back up here to pass that.
Well, same, okay, we're all in agreement with that.
Yeah, and you know, I, let me just say, my health reason is of age as well as being a cancer survivor. So, I'm not going to risk myself under certain circumstances, but I do have a responsibility as a legislative person and I want to carry it out.
Okay, and then, um, when we get to the ordinance, we will need to introduce and then we will need to suspend the rules so that we can get this put in place.
What?
Sure.
Is there a, um, is, do we have to ask the city, is there an emergency plan in place?
Is there an emergency plan?
No, I mean in place, like, right now, we can agree to this and as I say, you know, as she's saying, you know, I agree with, um, taking a stand of what type of plan, like, we don't want to have an open ticket either. You know, with, with things like, if, as a city, if, if, you know, the tornadoes and burn, and, um, Oregon, it's all a certainty, is to come up with some type of plan. So, as a city, do we have a plan in place? Do we have a team in place to discuss and to go through what, what we have planned? Something in black and white, rock, you know, document.
Uh, my answer to that would be not yet.
So, if we don't have a plan in place, then why are we agreeing to pass this ordinance with no plan? How can you work on anything without a plan?
Well, I, I would, I would say this, I think, I, I know what you're saying, but I don't think there's any way you can plan for this.
Well, not this particular thing, just any type of emergency.
I know, but this is, this is a specific emergency that is going to take a response that I don't think anyone could have foreseen and nothing could have been written down. I, I, I think that we're just giving our mayor the, the ability to do whatever is necessary at the time when he doesn't have the authority to do it right now. And we're not able to meet, but every two weeks or every first and third, you know, Tuesday of the month, um, he needs to be able to do things, um, at a very short time frame. And, and with this kind of emergency, and, and listen, if I didn't trust this mayor, I would be much more wary of this. I trust the mayor and also all of the, the, his people that, that are working in the city government. And this, this ends after this particular, um, event is over. It does not, it doesn't continue in perpetuity. So, I think that, that we're, we're just facing a very difficult situation and we don't know what's, what the circumstance is going to be. I think we're just giving him the ability to do what needs to be done and I trust him to do it, you know?
Well, I, 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 I'm, I'm at, I guess maybe I'm the youngest up here on this council. We've had Opel, I remember we had emergency plans there. I, I don't, I don't, maybe some of us new up here don't know, but there have been emergency plans and there have been teams that worked on the plan because as a matter of fact, when Opel came, I was a part of that team as being one of the council persons that wanted to work on that team.
I think there are plans, there are.
There are plans.
Certain things, Jeff?
Yes, Councilman, uh, President Pitt, we do have disaster identification plan, uh, countywide, for simply agreement with negative communities, and it's worked with all the Oklahoma and all the county through the EMA. So, there is a plan in place, a, a Corona plan in place, however, general disaster, tornadoes, hurricanes, you know.
And this plan is joint with the county?
It is a countywide plan through EMA. We have police chief on it, you know, fire chiefs on it. I'm on it, my crew's on it. We have players in place for that.
Thank you for the explanation.
I sure do.
I think, I think if there's better communication with what's going on, then it would be, there'd be less room for any type of confusion or question. So, you know, I would just recommend that if this is approved, that, that communication comes more readily and available because as things have been, um, happening now, I've been watching other people, you know, come out and say what's going on, what's happening, and I would like to see more, um, I won't say leadership, because I don't think you have an issue with leadership, just communication.
I wanted to deliver to the council about five different things today. I eat up with the coronavirus. Now, it's a fluid situation, it changes from lower to higher. We're doing the very best we can to employ every member of the council.
Well, not just, I have a lot of people that come in to you or contact you.
We're sending, we're posting it on social media, we're sending it to all the newspapers, TV, where it is. Now, and it's on our website.
You mean, I mean information from the CDC? I mean, like, what are we doing as a, you know, as a city, like, as far as what, what we're doing, not just what the hospital is doing, or, or I think, I think people would love to hear.
Did you send the first release to say it?
I did, yeah.
Did that tell you anything?
Well, let me just say, I've been here twenty-five years and I think there's been about three real serious crises. And I've never seen this city step up to the plate and move in the right direction that it needs to move. And I don't think this city would not step up this time. And I think that we have a mayor that would present to us as he spins if he had to do that, you know, what, so we would be aware. And I, I'm not questioning if any of that would be, I just want to make sure that I can be the councilperson I need to be to positively allow this city to move forward in a way it needs to because this is a crisis and it, it changes every scene, like, every second to me. And, and, and so as much as all of us can work together, that's what we need to do.
Okay. You okay with, well, can I get?
Yep. Um, we have a couple bids.
First bid is a, um, for a contract of Viper SD Solid, non-electric roof closers and SBL sixty-one automatic controls. Um, bid opening date is three, two, twenty. Uh, so like power services, uh, it's a middle of five, and there's two bids to receive. Um, it's a budgeted contract, the tabulation sheets are attached. We recommend that the contract be awarded to G and W Electric on their low bid, meeting specifications.
That's the, that's the first one or the second?
It's the second.
It's the second, I guess. It's the first one on my list. Yes, the second. Okay, the other one we're asking to be removed, um, we're pressed to be removed from the agenda, bulk power cannot honor the bid prices they submitted. If you look at the tab sheet, the, there was a, a large difference in each bid, um, so, um, either bulk missed it real high or the other company missed it, I mean, real low and the other company missed it real high, or somebody didn't know what they were doing, but we want to confirm this and maybe ask for this be rebid for, um, so that we'll know we're getting a fair price on this.
Man, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I know which one's which.
The one that we're asking is the, um, is for conduit systems by directional board and power method.
Okay, so, Mr. Gunnar, do we, I mean, he's on the bid, but he's on the, uh, agenda, but we're not going to take it up, that we have to, well, to take off the agenda?
Take it removed.
Well, that's, that's my question.
Take it removed.
Okay, okay, so it'd be removed, we just scratch, do we have to scratch it? Okay, can you take it off, Mr. Gunnar?
So, Mr. Mayor, behind you.
Okay, um, I'm going to leave our meeting. Um, if you allow now by Call, Oklahoma City Council meeting, uh, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty to order, Call our lead is Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pitt?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Uh, we're honored to have Reverend Tom Tippett here with this, uh, in place of Reverend Clifford Jones, who's going to make his way to the podium to, uh, pledge with our implication, uh, followed by, uh, Mr. Russell Jones to lead us in our pledge, you are with sanctions.
We thank you Father God, again, to be able to speak to you. I would thank you that you are Father of all humans because you created all humans and we're grateful that you know your person, that's Father, and your son. So grateful that you have been generous to this nation, you have called us to obey you, to know you, to defend among you. You've taken us through all sorts of crises in our history, uh, wars internally, externally. You've given us, uh, you've given us so many things to overcome these things. And again, we find ourselves in a very challenging situation worldwide and in our nation, particularly in our community. And we thank you for all the resources that you've given to us. We thank you for the dedication that so many people have, uh, to make sure that everyone is provided for, no one is overlooked, and we're so grateful for the, uh, medical care and all the concern that neighbors have for each other and that we'll come through this, uh, Father, hopefully, uh, better than we were before. This has happened before, we've passed through many challenging times, as you know. You've sent these challenging times for us, primarily recognize that you, you are a God of mercy and that we experience your mercy once again, that we be even stronger in our commitment to you and to one another in living in our community here, in your Son's name we pray.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Jeff, and you're up. You all that, uh, present to receive, copy the minutes of the March third, two thousand twenty, council meeting. Is there a motion to, et cetera, minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any, uh, any additions, revisions, or corrections? Having our own favorite signature, I say aye?
Aye.
Close, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, each of you have the preliminary financial report of at the end of February. Uh, as always, if you have questions or comments on this, please call us. I'm asking city administrator George Motley to give the February building permit report.
Well, the report for February had a grand total of fourteen billion, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and thirty cents. We've had, uh, forty-one new second family homes, uh, for nine days, six hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty cents of that total, uh, which was, again, a great trend. It brings our year-to-date total for new second family home to a hundred and forty-three. And our, uh, permits, uh, year-to-date, fifty-one million, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. So, it continues the trend, uh, it, uh, whether it stops folks from planning and buying permits. So, uh, there's a lot of housing being built.
Good one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. And to citizens' communications, Mr. Jones.
And that's the time, if you'd like to speak to the council or the mayor, come to the podium, please sign in so I can get in touch if you have need to, and please keep it to five minutes or less if you can.
Good evening, Mayor.
Let me remind you, I, I let this guy pan last time, we, we had five minutes. You have five minutes, and she has five minutes?
Well, I think we, I think we've kind of covered most of the things that, that was discussed and took a little time last time, and I think, uh, all we.
Let's just remind her.
Thank you, sir. I mean, I, I don't have to keep it fair. I'm sorry to have to come before you guys, uh, at such a time as this. Mayor, I appreciate you doing what you've done and I understand your position not being able to go out with excitement. But what I would. But what I was asked to do last time, before you guys were, to present some clarity in terms of title. I presented to Attorney Gunnar a copy of the assignment of the property in terms of the deeds. I have before you being tonight, before you guys, because this is our purchaser. I said to you guys about Mrs. Fungleroy's condition in terms of her having several back operation. She has taken an interest in, in spite of her position at the hospital and the crisis, to not back out on this. She, uh, is putting money in getting the property where it looks in a much more presentable condition than what you guys had seen previously, uh, I'm, I went out, uh, along with Jeff Cockery today and took some.
You took the pictures, how, you did me all a lot of tests, yeah?
Okay. Took some pictures of what's been done in the last fourteen days. And, uh, like I said, Attorney Gunnar, she has a contractor, and he has begun to work in terms of facade, exterior facade. We have, uh, an engineer has lived at the place, and I've spoken with your building code official. I asked, uh, Councilman, uh, Jones to take her with the property since it's in her ward. And I think you guys will find out, find that she's wanting to help provide more low-cost housing for rental or for resale. And, uh, I'm just leaving forward with my last couple of minutes for any questions for me. And also, she has her attorney here, Attorney Foot, tonight, so he will be able to answer any questions that I can't answer. So we, we're asking for a stay on this property, she, uh, needing the time. Like I said, she is a hospital administrator, she would like to have a hundred and twenty days to bring this property up to scale. But in the last fourteen days, you can see substantial change. Any questions for any council members?
Yeah, I have a question, what is the current expiration of the, uh, of the demolition?
Uh, April fifteenth.
April fifteenth, April fifteenth.
Okay, so we have, we have another meeting before April fifteenth, we have a meeting April the seventh? Is that right?
Yes, another three weeks.
April seventh?
Yes.
All right, then, then we'd like to see some more of these pictures on April seventh. If it has continued to get better?
Definitely.
Be able to take it under consideration?
Definitely.
If it has not, then we leave what we have with that.
Sure, and, and there has been inspections and also power services for temporary reusings has been released as of today, she has an electrical contractor and a contractor. Is there any other questions for me or Mrs. Humphrey?
Question, so is it your aunt, is the one doing the renovations, or is it Miss Humphrey or another?
It's my aunt that owns the property.
Is doing it, okay.
That, that has, uh, a back condition that has, like, four operations.
But she's doing the renovations?
Uh, just she's doing, she's purchased a property, and just for the record, she's purchased a property that was in this present state over Monroe, Boian's Evergreen Cemetery, and I think she's about eighty percent before she asked for occupancy of it, that she's put in a roof, she's, uh, went inside and vetted and electrical and et cetera.
Well, it already transferred the ownership.
Excuse me, ownership cannot be transferred, most of these documents were emailed to him. As soon as we receive the hard copy, it will, we will be able to go over to the courthouse and record that and transfer to you this. And.
Thank you.
All right, uh, like I said, Attorney. And, and Attorney Foot, if you don't mind coming forward or standing right there?
Pretty well covered, what we're doing, um, I'll be able to answer questions.
You got anything to add, Jeff?
Uh, yes, uh, President Smith. I would have to sell them a building permit to do the actual repairs, a building permit stays valid for a hundred and eighty days, unless there's none work, you know, for a period of one eighty, a hundred and eighty days. Now, I went by Monroe this afternoon, how she's working on it, she's made significant progress on it. Uh, you know, I've almost said that if we can improve the piece, housing, make it, make it viable, instead of having another baked life that we have to do, we can bake this on every summer, I'm all for that, if we can actually improve. She's shown a little, uh, work history of being able to do this. Uh, it didn't take a hundred and eighty days for the house to get in that condition, a hundred and eighty days might make a difference. In my opinion, but it's up to the council.
So, you're saying?
I would have to issue a permit for her to do the renovations, and therefore, even if it is, they would legally have a legal permit beyond the April fifteenth deadline.
But we don't have to issue it until April fifteenth, right? I am, I'm about.
If she wanted to go in and legally do the work, I would be required to issue a renovation permit.
To do, for her to be able to get a permit.
And it remains legally valid for a hundred and eighty days, because she did nothing.
So we, in, in order for her to get a permit, I understand that's correct, that we would have to take some, some action on extending or removing the demolition?
Well, uh, with, with your instruction to allow her to work on the project, uh, as a project, based on the history of the project she was working on, right? Uh, like I said, we, we've done a couple of demolitions on this, and we have to take it back again. You know, we'll take it back again, but her, uh, the work she does so far Monroe, I think it looks really nice. So we're, we're taking a risk, but worst case scenario, start it all over again.
Actually, the city of the property owner can enter into an extension agreement to extend the deadline if you push it past April fifteenth.
And there is.
It has to be a written agreement of the two.
And there is also a clause in our demolition ordinance that I already reported to you why I did not count demolition in a hundred and eighty days, likely with extension on a hundred and eighty days, and obviously, everyone on this council is aware that it would allow extension.
Okay, let's go with that one.
Yes, sir.
Now, let me understand what we've done, because I want to make sure she has legal rights to be out there doing what she has to do in order to get it done. Let me understand what.
What we're going to, what, what we said was that the building code enforcement will, will give them a hundred and eighty extension on the demolition to allow them to do the work, which also allows them to get a permit to do this.
That's right.
And we don't have to.
Do we, do we need to take legal, do we need to take any action?
Yeah.
No, just the, have to be a written agreement between the city and the, and the property owner, Jeff can handle it.
Okay, Mr. Foot, you and Jeff Golds, get that worked out?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Others? Okay, we'll move on, uh, general business, Mr. Jones.
First item on general business is a request from Main Street, the Stone Rogers Club's full temporary street closure on March fourth, ninth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion for approval?
Second. You have a motion to secondary discussion?
So, this can be canceled?
It can be canceled.
Call of rock, please.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up. Second item is a request from Envision for their sixth annual Unity Stampede Five K and Walk at Sports Place on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Question, assuming that the coronavirus is ended by the end, if it should still be here and we are forced to not allow something like this, can we have a clause in this that, that would not take place or?
They're all council, right? They're all council.
You're on the go, if you give us the ordinance tonight, the mayor will have the right to cancel. Okay. Public events if needed. Next public.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up. Third item is a request from Main Street for the Hometown Craft Beer and Food Truck Event on May sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up. Fourth item is a request from the March of Doms for their annual march for babies, only that's in the local park, on May sixteen, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up. The last item is a request from Main Street for their inaugural Okalaka Jazz and Arts Festival on June twentieth, twenty twenty.
Is there a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
And bids, Mr. Martin?
Request that the first bid be, uh, taken off the agenda for reasons explained in the work session. And on the other bid, we're asking the council to approve a contract for Viper SD Solid Diode Electric Re closures and SBL sixty-one R two controls, I'm sure you all know exactly what all it is. Bid opening date is three, two, twenty, uh, so like power services, a, a bid was mailed to five vendors. Two were received, it's a budgeted contract, bid tabulation sheets are attached. Recommend the contract be awarded to G M W Electric Company on their low bid meeting specifications.
Is there a motion for approval? A motion and a second, is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
Any motions, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the, uh, first resolution approved tribal, uh, tribal expense reports submitted by Derek Lee, President Smith, Mayor Fuller, T J White, Tyler Scott, and Councilwoman Tiffany Gibson-Pitts.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second, is there discussion? Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All four items, one empty.
Second resolution authorizes the Okalaka Police Department to purchase, uh, A B O SWAT gear from Safeware Incorporated at a cost of eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
The third resolution authorizes the Information Technology Department to purchase lighting sensors from Aridium at a total cost of one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Second. Second, is there discussion?
What is the extreme?
These are, the, the, these are sensors, they, they, uh, they've come about from requests from some of the departments, planning of us to, uh, figure out how much noise there is around the city and, uh, how much pollution. And, uh, the fire department has asked us to, uh, provide some safety measures, uh, for companies that use, uh, poisonous gases, and this is part of their processes. So, uh, it took us a while to get to this point where we actually found this, but I don't know this is a lot of money, but they're affordable, uh, and, uh, so this is the first, uh, the first phase of this, uh, to, to, to go across the city.
With this now?
No.
Mr. President, with this now, you know, what we have, is noise causing people, is this, it would?
Yes, ma'am, this is part of this, yes.
Okay, okay.
Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
The, uh, fourth resolution, um, approves invoices for subscription services under and pursuant to a subscription agreement with Lexi Cold LLC. Uh, City Council approved the, uh, subscrip- subscription agreement with Lexi Cold in two thousand eighteen. The, uh, of, of, the invoice has increased by about a thousand dollars, so you have a resolution that approves the, an invoice for nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars for subscription services between October one, two thousand, uh, ninth, I mean, yeah, October one, two thousand nineteen through, uh, March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. And it authorizes, uh, the approval of subsequent, uh, invoices for subscription services in the future.
Is there a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson. Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
Uh, Resolution number five approves a special appropriation in the amount of one thousand dollars to Envision Okalaka to assist with the cost of the twenty-twenty Unity Stampede Walk Run event.
Is there a motion for approval?
Vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
Resolution number six accepts a proposal for professional services and approves the client services agreement submitted by P P L, uh, Incorporated for industrial boulevard and north art drive improvements.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
Uh, Resolution number seven approves the settlement agreement and release between the City of Okalaka and Stone Mart Builders LLC with respect to Trillium Subdivision.
Is there a motion for approval?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Have a night, Call of Rock, please.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Pitts.
Aye.
Mr. Smithson.
Aye.
Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All of it up.
Ordinance is, Mr. Gunnar?
Mr. President, the first ordinance, uh, authorizes the conveyance of fifteen oh six Harper Street to Hometown Partners LLC for eight thousand dollars. This, uh, resolution is on the table, it's my understanding that the council wishes to remove it from the table and vote on this resolution.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Gunnar, we're going to leave it on the table.
Just leave it on the table?
Please.
All right. Uh, second, uh, ordinance was added to the agenda this evening, this is an emergency ordinance concerning the coronavirus public health emergency. Um, in my opinion, we are in the midst of the greatest, uh, health crisis this country has experienced since eighteen, eighteen, I mean nineteen eighteen and nineteen nineteen, which was the Spanish flu influenza, uh, epidemic. Uh, which by the way, caused more lives worldwide than World War One did, very serious event. Uh, we are also in the midst of a crisis that is imposing more restrictions on the American public than any other crisis of any type since World War Two. Uh, we have a rapidly evolving strain of a virus that is attacking the public. It's multiplying rapidly. In Okalaka, we went from one known case yesterday to three today, no telling how many in the future.
Is it leaking?
Yeah, leaking, it's all leaking. Um, so it's a, it's a very evolving situation. Uh, the purpose of all the restrictions is to impose separations among the public so that, uh, the demand for health services does not peak. If, uh, that happens, a lot of people are going to die unnecessarily. Hospitals are already full with patients, we've had a bad flu year to begin with. Uh, we don't have the medical personnel nor the equipment, such as respirators, to handle, uh, an evolving situation like this. Uh, the best, uh, thing that our country can do is prepare and adopt measures immediately to try to slow down the pace of this virus. Uh, it's taken really drastic steps to do that. Uh, uh, tonight, the City of San Francisco, almost a million in population, is under a complete lockdown. Uh, Mayor de Blasio has announced that New York City may be under a complete lockdown. A city of eight million within forty-eight hours unthinkable in the past if something like that would happen. Uh, you have. You have before you a ordinance that would declare a public health emergency in Opelika because we are already experiencing the virus in Opelika. We know that at least one of the three cases in Opelika was a person that worked at East Alabama Medical Center. So we know the virus has come into Opelika. We know the three known cases in Le County, there are probably multiples of that actually cases that have been, that haven't been identified yet. So the virus is spreading in the community. Doesn't do any good to try to stop people from coming in the community because it's already here. Not only declaring a public health emergency, this, this ordinance with vast sweeping powers in the mayor, something I never thought that I would see in my lifetime, but it's absolutely necessary considering the circumstances. Public health officials say we don't have three weeks, which is time for the next council meeting to act. If something isn't done in the next two weeks to slow the pace of this virus, it may be too late. We will have scores of unnecessary deaths in our community and throughout the other states. So it is my recommendation that the council approve this ordinance with the amendment as discussed in the pre-meeting offered by Councilmember Smithy, and that we give the mayor the authority to act on behalf of our community. I want to say this, the federal government is not going to save Opelika. The federal government does not have the personnel to come in and make the changes that are required and invoke the powers that are required. Federal government's good when you have a localized situation like Katrina and you can send the eighty-second airborne in. But when the virus is attacking every community in the United States, it has to be handled on a local basis. If we win this battle, it's going to be because of our local city and county employees, our hospital workers, our medical community, our E M Ts, our firefighters, and our police officers, and our code enforcement officers. That's who's going to win this battle if it's won. So I recommend to the council adopting this emergency ordinance tonight by suspending the rules and allowing it to come along.
As for Mayor of the council to introduce the ordinance?
I would be glad to.
Ms. Jones, thank you. Now, is there a motion to suspend the rules and take this issue up? Is there a move? Is there a second?
Second.
Call her up, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All of them, aye.
And now, is there a motion to pass the emergency ordinance?
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Let's read the amended part. I should say, maybe the amended, is that, that's it?
Forgive me if I have misstated, Mr. Smithy says that the state, if state law would be temporarily or permanently changed to allow council members to vote or to participate by electronic means, the, the members of the city council may then vote or participate in accordance with state law in effect at the time.
Is that, that's...
I have a question from Mayor Fuller. On section five D, it says in order requiring the closing of businesses is deemed non-essential by the way. Do you consider a vet clinic not, vet clinic non-essential?
Same here.
A vet clinic or animal clinic? I know that was a concern of a vet clinic in the area because they would not want, like if you were to get to the position where you need to close businesses, and of course the hospital would remain open, but what about a vet clinic?
I think we should go on case by case. You know, if, if our dog Ellie gets sick, we, we want to, yeah. So I'm guessing that vet, folks like us would be essential. And there's some non-central things like bars and game rooms. There's a lot of business, and I don't, I hope we don't have to close any of them. I hope we'll self-regulate. And bothers leaving the government just to close them businesses and how you decide which one to close and which to reopen. So I hope we will self-regulate and not kind of date and with our, especially our small businesses can stay open.
Call her up, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All of them, aye.
We do have a, a new appointment, a opportunity to reappoint Ms. Tiffy Miller to Opelika City School Board. She has agreed to serve if her term is renewed. We have a motion to reappoint Ms. Tiffy Miller to Opelika City School Board for a term out in April the first of two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call her up, please.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Pitts?
Aye.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Cannon?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
All of them, aye.
Before we go to the character trait, I'd like to back up just a little bit on the most recent crisis that was going on in our community.[1659.94]